Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Monday, January 18th, 2021 to order. First off, any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we move to number three, approval of the agenda. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Dunstall, second by Councilor Vardy. Moved by Councilor Dunstall, second by Councilor Vardy. Resolved that the agenda for the January 18th, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and a seconder for item number six, Administration and Finance Consent. Councilor Bothwell?
Did I miss adoption of agenda?
Yes.
Because I don't have raised hand here on my Zoom, so I meant to address adoption of agenda and I, sorry.
Yeah. So.
Dorothy, raised hand is now under reactions.
Is it, did it get moved? Okay.
Okay. What do we need to do here? Well, that's been our, the agenda's been approved.
Okay. I'd asked the clerk to ask, ask to add some information, an information request, so can I put it under planning?
Sarah? Yeah. Administration or planning? Yeah, that, that, the clerk has confirmed that it can go there, Councilor Bothwell.
Thank you.
Just need a mover and a seconder for the information report. Councilor Vardy moved. Secondary. Councilor Dunstall. This isn't where Charles is. Okay, I didn't think so. Moved by Councilor Vardy, second by Councilor Dunstall. Resolved that the Committee of the Whole hereby approves the following items. The various consent items be approved and the recommendation is contained therein. Information report dated January 18th, 2021. All in favor? Councilor Vane, you'd like to speak on it?
Is this the Committee of the Whole minutes you just raised? Sorry, because there's an item I want to lift from the last Committee of the Whole minutes.
No, that'll, that'll be in the council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So all in favor? I read the resolution. That's carried. Councilor Bothwell, we can deal with, with your information request now.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I wasn't sure we're on the agenda. I'd, these would fit under. So I have an information request. One is for C O, two are for planning, and one is for Parks, Rec, and Culture. I'll send them to the clerk, but the first one is a request for an update on the whistleblower policy, originally requested August 26th, to be a standalone policy brought to council January 21st, 2020 as part of the Employee Code of Conduct. It was sent back to council February 3rd to be a standalone policy with clarification. And the policy was noted in the May 2020 and September 2020 council referred motion, referred matters list to be completed by Q4 in 2020, but it now appears on the January 2021 council referred matters list to be brought back to council Q1 2021. So I just would like an update on that because it just seems to be shuffled between quarters from last calendar year to this one. Planning, request for updated planning status and activity report. The last report was, that was provided to Committee of the Whole was May 2020. Request for update on the status of the Grimsby Beach interim control bylaw that expires February the 3rd, 2021, and the potential extension, as well as an update on the status of the Grimsby Beach Study Consultants Deliverables to date. And a request for Parks and Rec for an update on the Parks Plan for the Place Polonaise, Casablanca, and Fifth Wheel Beach areas because of the recent large sign that was posted indicating amenities, including play structures, trail improvement, public art, picnic tables, and landscape enhancements coming this 2021. And I've had a lot of questions from the community on, on some of these matters, so I'm asking for information requests. I'll send them to the clerk to include in the, in the minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Bothwell. C O, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, I'll work with the clerk on how we respond to those in future. If you wanted, if Councilor Bothwell wanted a response now or on especially the whistleblowing policy.
Yeah, I, I, I think that these are information requests, so we'll get a timely response. I don't think it has to be right now. All right, are we moving to 7.1, Report IC 22263-1220? Charles?
Thank you, Mayor, and my best to everyone for a happier new year. I, I will be very brief. I am reporting that IC 12263-1220 is a complaint that I received, and it has been terminated on the basis of it being frivolous and vexatious. My obligation is to report that to council. I have to report pursuant to Section 3 of Appendix A that a specific complaint has been terminated. I believe I've now done that. I note as well that the name that I shall not disclose confidential information that could identify a person concerned. I note that your bylaw C-20-423 says that all of these reports are to be made public, but that the identity of complainants that are non-elected officials be kept confidential unless consented. So I have reported and I just want to make sure that if indeed the clerk is going to make that public, that the identity of the, of the individual be blacked out.
Great, that, that will be so noted, Charles.
And that is my report.
All right. Great, thank you. Any questions from council for Charles? Seeing none, I'll get a mover and a seconder for the report to be received. Moved by Councilor Frack, second by Councilor Vane. Moved by Councilor Frack, second by Councilor Vane. Resolved that report IC 12263-1220 be received. All in favor? That's carried. Now we move to 7.1B, Report C O 21-02 Director Updates.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, oh, thank you very much, Charles.
All right, thank you.
Sorry about that. Have a great evening.
Bye, everyone. You too. Thank you.
C O?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, council, I just thought I would provide a little bit of information prior to you making on a resolution coming forward in 7.2 related to a Councilor Bothwell notice of motion last week on directors providing monthly updates to council. I just provided a little bit of information to say that, you know, just last week, we talked about how we're moving away more so from departments into more of a team approach and providing council information and driving your strategic priorities. I meet weekly as your C O with, with the directors. We go over all their operational work plans. We go over how they're meeting strategic priorities. We go over trying to, you know, do all the referred matters lists. We provide pandemic updates weekly to council, sometimes more than once per week. We're providing minutes of advisory board meetings. We're providing policy reports, information reports, sometimes responding to correspondence. We like to do a lot more educational workshops, which I think might meet the requirements of Councilor Bothwell's motion. We just haven't been able to with the pandemic. Things like calming measures for traffic, parking. We'd really like to provide more workshops on that. And we're actually doing a lot more community engagement, banging the table. What I find is your C O that I'm responsible for the operational manners and then bringing any updates to you needed for you to make policy decisions. This, this notice of motion and resolution, which you'll be talking about, is operational in nature. And I would say that, you know, that be left to your C O and we provide you the policy reports that you need. So I'm hoping that not only the improvements we want to make with workshops, but also we've talked about improving announcements for the mayor on upcoming community events should satisfy this, this need for this notice of motion. Thank you.
Thank you, C O. Questions from council? Councilor Vardy?
Yes, thank you very much. And if I could just comment, personally, I'm feeling like we're not getting enough information from our C O that, that we're being left in the dark. And ever since we moved to Committee of the Whole, we, we just don't have any idea of what's going on in town. And to, to just say, well, this is operational and I'll tell you what you need to know. I don't like someone else filtering information determining what I should need to know and what I don't need to know. Obviously, I mean, Councilor Bothwell has brought this notice of motion up because she's feeling that she's not getting enough information either, particularly on, on planning files. That's where I feel most in the dark. And I would really appreciate it if our C O brought more information to the table than what we're getting now. Thank you.
Councilor Dunstall?
Thank you, worship. If I could add a comment, Mayor Jordan, you probably remember this because you were formerly an alderman and Councilor Cadwell can remember this, as he was formerly an alderman on our previous councils. I'm going back a number of terms, but I've only been on one previous term. But I'm just looking at my Zoom video screen and I see a whole myriad of names, Brandon Workman, the Grimsby Fire Department, Philip J., Director, Sarah Kim, Sarah Sweeney, Stephen Gruniger, Antonetta. All these people are here at this meeting if, and I think Councilor Cadwell will vouch for me when he used to sit next to me in the previous council. He used to say, where are all the department heads? We have questions. We can't get answers. They're all here now. They're here to answer our questions if we have any concerns. And that's, I think it's wonderful that we've seen this team approach take effect and everybody seems to be working together where we were working in the past more in silos. So I'm quite happy to see the change that, that's evolving. I think we just need to give it a little more time and we'll see that it will effectively work a lot better for, for us as, as counselors. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Councilor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I can definitely echo Councilor Dunstall's comments of the past, how things work. He nailed it many, many times. We'd have a lot of issues come to the, to the chambers at a council meeting. And a lot of times the answers got deferred a little bit because we didn't have staff, the availability of staff, as Councilor Dunstall said, right, 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 working with us at the time. So I, I think things are going very well. I'm very happy. I've lived the other, other side of it. Now I'm living this side. And I think it's, we're definitely heading in the right direction. I've never had a problem getting information. If, if as a counselor, you're looking for information, staff has always been very good responding back, providing information. So I, I'm very happy that we're, we're on this path of the Committee of the Whole and I'm, I'm very content how things are going right now. Thank you.
Councilor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'd just like to clarify at the C O, please. Councilor Dunstall's comment that we have all the directors here right now at this council meeting and we can ask any questions we want. I, I didn't think that a council, that we were allowed to just ask questions on status updates of things or, or pose questions on a community concern that's been raised to us that affects a number of residents. I didn't think that this was the forum at council to do that as we used to do at standing committees. Is that correct? Or are we allowed to just at any time during the agenda, ask?
Through you, Mayor, to Councilor Bothwell. I would think if there's some quick clarification requirements, but I think council's done a good job where they need extensive information. They brought forward notices of motion and then we respond extensively when we have to use a lot of staff time or resources to move away from our current jobs. But there's a quick clarification requirement. I'm sure that we could assist, especially with everybody here.
Thank you.
Councilor Sharp?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Jordan. So those questions, they can come in, new business or announcements. We can ask a question for clarification. Is that the appropriate time to do that? I guess I'm asking the clerk? Or the mayor?
So when we're speaking on an item and you have any clarification and it doesn't require as much staff time, we can bring it through an information request? That's usually the normal course to bring those queries.
Thank you.
See, seeing no further questions, need a mover and a seconder to receive Report C O 21-02. Moved by Councilor Cadwell, second by Councilor Vane. Moved by Councilor Cadwell, second by Councilor Vane. Was all of that Report C O 21-02 dated January 18th, 2021 be received. All in favor? That's carried. Move to Section 7.2, Resolutions Director Updates. We have Councilor Bothwell as the mover. Need a seconder and I'll read the resolution. Councilor Frack. Moved by Councilor Bothwell, second by Councilor Frack. Whereas council has set accountability and transparency as a strategic priority to build trust and confidence in the town's operations and services and establish a strong reputation for the corporation. And whereas council commenced a Committee of the Whole structure as of September 21st, 2020, retiring and replacing the role of planning and development as administration and finance, public works, and park recreation and culture standing committees. And whereas the previous structure of standing committees allowed committee members to receive monthly updates from directors on current work plans and matters of community interest in the form of directors' reports and status updates and provided a form to ask questions and seek clarifying information. And whereas counselors and the town staff are often made aware of community concerns or matters of common interest through multiple communication channels and if inefficient email exchanges, consuming significant staff resources to disseminate, disseminate to many individuals. And whereas the Committee of the Whole structure does not provide for regular monthly updates from directors on public projects and matters of community interest. Therefore, be it resolved that staff provide counsel in the community with an overview of ongoing work projects and matters of common community interest in a timely manner as situations occur and evolve, thereby alleviating pressures on staff resources having to respond to multiple individual requests and that the directors of public works, planning, development and bylaw, administration and finance, and park recreation and culture be directed to provide monthly information updates on matters of community interest at the Committee of the Whole. Seeing no comments. Councilor Bothwell? I see your hand now.
It was up and then somebody put it down, so sorry. So I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward in the C O's report. I just don't think that some of the, the tools that he's suggesting address the gap that I'm seeing. And it's not to give more work to the directors or to direct them in any way. It's to actually, under the Staff Relations Code of Conduct, it's actually to Section 4.3, provide sufficient information. Section 4.6, provide appropriate follow-up to council inquiries. 4.7, keep council up to date and informed. And 5.2.1, ensure that council is apprised of any issues that may impact their decision-making. And under 6.4, its council provides the direction, staff give the advice and implement council's directives. Service delivery decisions are made by council. This is like a service delivery kind of question is how can we better serve our community? Because I'm sure we all get numerous emails from constituents and we see on Facebook that often things get propagated between multiple peoples through forums. And it's to try to alleviate rumors, alleviate staff workload where I might get two or three residents in this area commenting about that, that huge sign that went up at the end of the end of Place Polonaise and, and Hunter area here. And immediately everybody was saying, well, what's going on? What's going on? And I didn't know the sign was going up and it's like 20 feet by 20 feet. It's absolutely humongous. I do know that our park staff have been working diligently to come up with a, a strategy for how we're going to develop these parks, but the last I heard was we were going to work with the fifth wheel and decide how that parks incorporation would work with the rest of them. So I hadn't really heard any more of that. And when the sign went up, it was like everybody was all over Facebook, just asking what's going on, what's going on? And I thought it might be a way for directors to bring forward before the sign went in the ground. Let us know in the ward and then as well, maybe just make a statement. It's not a report, just saying, by the way, we're going to put a sign up. We're working, you know, and I, I don't even know what the story is. I'm assuming that there's going to be something coming to council in a report that's going to tell us what, what the, the community vision is now for, for those parks. So that's an example of, of perhaps being proactive in the community by directors coming to Count Committee of the Whole in advance of putting that sign up, for instance, and saying, by the way, we're putting a sign up and here's the plan. And then we're all on the same page if we get asked. Similar to the Grimsby Beach interim control bylaw, that would be another opportunity for planning staff to have come to Committee of the Whole through a director's report and said it expires next week. This is the plan. What does council choose to do? Or not even as a decision, but you know, this is where we're at with it. This is where we are with the study. So I've put those forward as information update requests because I didn't know when staff were going to be bringing forward anything on these items. And I have to, and I've been asked by the community to address them. So it's a way to try to fill that gap, provide information to the community, be proactive, make sure we're all, and we, we have the information we need to make the decisions that we need to do. And we're telling the community the right messaging. So that's what I'm asking for. If I'm hearing that, well, we can ask directors at a council meeting now, which is kind of a new idea, which is great, but I, I know in the past, we've been told, no, we can't do that. And it's going to involve too much staff time or work, so we'll have to go back and do it. I'm hopeful this opens the door to a little more opportunity to ask those questions because this way we reach a wider audience than just a few people that we have to respond to by email when we know that the, if one person writes us, there's 10 people talking about it. So it's usually, and it gets bigger if we don't have the right information. So this is a way to try to have town staff be more visible, I mean proactive and helping council do our job and giving the community information they need to feel reassured that, you know, they're, they're being communicated with and their interests are, are covered. Those are just two of the items. There's, you know, a few other ones, like we might've had the Lampman Pond issue that involved the whole Escarpment Vista Estates community, which was very concerned about that issue. And this would be a way for Public Works or somebody to come out and say, this is how we're addressing it. And, and it would be an information sort of report. It just has to be a minute or two of, of an update and allowing counselors to perhaps ask a question or two about it. So if, if the C O feels that the way this, this motion is written, that it isn't appropriate for directors to come and, and bring that type of information to Committee of the Whole, then perhaps I, you know, a friendly amendment would be to say that the C O, C O comes forward with those types of, of that type of information to us at Committee of the Whole. It just would be much more helpful than me having to ask through information requests each time for updates. So that's the purpose of this, this motion. You know, if there's a better way to do it, I'm, I'm open to it, but I'm just saying, like, right now, I'm feeling a big gap, missing standing committees and not having, you know, having to ask for each piece of information through either a notice of motion. It just, it just seems unwieldy and it's often too late. Like, we're going to miss that February 3rd deadline for the, the interim control bylaw expiring. So that's just, that's my reason for trying to be proactive with this motion. Thank you.
C O, did you, did you want to comment on that?
The bylaw expires in May, so I think we're coming forward with that. I think from what I've heard, we could probably just in normal Committee of the Whole do have the directors do more information reports, like this is what's up, but not mandated director's report each month. But from what I'm hearing, you know, maybe a heads-up information report. I can incorporate that into their, you know, our weekly meetings and making sure that what's up for the next month, but not to mandate to us that each director has to provide a report. Just allow me to look at, you know, now that I've heard this, you know, encouraging directors when there's something like that coming up. We provide an information report as part of the Committee of the Whole. And we could even put that in consent. We've done that a few times just so your meetings aren't that long and you can always pull it out of consent. So I think we can resolve what Councilor Bothwell said now that I've heard her concerns in the current Committee of the Whole.
Great, thank you, C O. Councilor Vardy?
Yeah, just a couple of suggestions and, and thank you, Dorothy, for Councilor Bothwell for bringing this up. As I said, I'm, I'm feeling like too often in the dark in terms of what's going on and I want more information and I, ever since we've moved to this format of Committee of the Whole, before when we participated on committees and we could attend committees, we had a much better idea of what's going on. So given that all of our directors and senior staff are in attendance at these meetings, maybe they could give a short verbal update of what they're doing and give us, and give us an opportunity just to ask some questions for information. We're not looking to direct staff and I just want to say I fully respect that it's the C O's job to operationalize what council directs. And I'm not looking to interfere with that. But I am looking to get a lot more information. So if, if they could each be given, you know, some might need five minutes, some might need, you know, one minute. Maybe that it's not to require everybody to come forward, but I'd say certainly on the planning files, we're not not, I don't feel that I'm getting enough information. Maybe something else that, that you could do C O would be to share your minutes of your team meetings. And that would be a good way for us to know what's going on or what we might want to ask further questions about. It's hard to ask a question about something if we don't know what's going on. And, you know, I have to say, often two times, unless we ask a very specific question, we, we won't get the information that we're looking for. That, you know, I, I think it'd be really helpful if, if directors could be really forthcoming. Because if we don't know Because if we don't know, how do we ask? Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I can appreciate some of the comments of my fellow counselors, but when I read this motion here, I've never had a problem getting the information I want. Part of that information comes to reading all the material that we're given on on a weekly basis to prepare for a committee of the whole and for council meetings. And not saying that everyone does it, but of many times I've seen in it, one individual or another not be prepared when it's written right in the report. That being said, I know Counselor Bothwell is very diligent in her readings. But I look at this and we just had a report last month on all the great accomplishments that we've we've done as a council. I actually see us working more efficiently since we've gone to the new committee of the whole structure as before. Before, yes, there's a lot more readings to do that I have to do on my on my own and not necessarily being spoon fed the information. As I believe the the committee meetings that we had before gave us an opportunity to constantly ask questions where where staff may feel obligated to do it and we were absolutely spoon fed the information. I have no problem with the way this works. I think that we're going down a very dangerous path of potentially over monitoring staff. I look to see inefficient emails. I I'm not aware of any inefficient emails. I don't think I've sent staff a lot of emails. And if if we have inefficiency, then I like to see a report to show that inefficiencies. I like to see how many emails are being sent from counselors to staff to show the inefficiencies. And I like to see it compared to before we went to committee of the whole as to now going to the committee of the whole. But I don't think that we have an issue. I think that what I'm hearing from my colleagues, if they want to take this motion and reword it and bring it back in another date, I think that's where we should be looking to go. Thank you.
Counselor Sharp. Counselor Sharp, it appears that we can't hear you. Yeah, Counselor Sharp, we're not getting anything in audio from you.
Can you hear me now? How about now? No, yes?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what happened, but um it changed the settings. So what I was saying is that when we had standing committees, I did feel like that we had a lot more time to go through the details of of each individual thing. So for example, that sign that Counselor Bothwell brought up. And I just want to mention, it's a sign talking about the waterfront trail and it talk about the park component of the waterfront trail. And was put up in the Winston Road neighborhood. And I don't think it's twenty feet by twenty feet. That's, I think it's maybe eight feet by twelve feet. But it's it's a big sign in. But at the committee, at the planning committee, we might have talked about how big should that sign be? And we might have talked about what should that sign be made of? Or like, is the wind condition going to blow it down? We might have spent a lot of time talking about that. And so, yeah, we'd be very involved. But our town staff is a professional and they have done this for longer than many of us have. But we also we would spend a lot of time on it. We had two and a half, three hour council or planning meetings and two and a half, three hour parks and rec meetings. And, you know, one to two hour admin and finance meetings. And then I wasn't on the public works, but a few hours there. So what we're doing now in in less time, we used to spend ten hours on. And we broke staff up into smaller groups and we went and sat down with them. But so now that we've switched to the committee of the whole, it's like you kind of got to pick away one or the other. And so if we were to go into that much detail here, it would take so long. There's eight counselors on this meeting where there was only four in our other meetings. And we each have a question or two to ask about each report. And sometimes we have a delegation come in and we spend forty minutes like discussing and thanking and like each of us takes our our ten minute turn. And so this report, I feel like could really draw out the committee of the whole structure. And I think that we need to kind of, I mean, it might be valid to say, let's go back to the the standing committees is is maybe another, the other option. But I think that trying to make a hybrid of the two will make for our meetings that'll go past ten o'clock and then we have to do our council meeting. And it's tough to stay up till twelve or one o'clock. And I know town staff is at town hall and the mayor is there too. And you know, we don't want to make them stay there until one o'clock. So like, if there's ways to do this via emails or via information requests, I think that that I'm not sure if we can get all that into to one meeting. So that's just my comment. I maybe if the counselor would withdraw this and bring it back, because I think I'm going to vote against it. So it takes a two thirds majority to to bring it back. Anyhow, it's not my motion, but but I think that I've expressed my point. Thanks.
Counselor Vardy.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, sort of build on what Counselor Sharp has said that personally, I don't recall getting into that kind of minutia at our standing committee meetings. And I think, you know, given the sign as an example, we'd have known a sign was coming. We'd have been curious about the content of the sign, not the the material the sign is made of. And then we would have been prepared for questions when people called us about the sign. So I, you know, I I I felt much better informed when we had the standing committees. So I'm not looking to create extra work, but really, you know, I I I want to do my duty as a counselor and and that includes having to work. So I'd just like to add that. Thanks.
Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, worship. If I might ask Counselor Bothwell, if she'd be willing to do a friendly amendment? Because it does say in the motion specifically that each department would give a monthly report. And I I sure like the idea of getting updates at the these standing committee meetings and they have, they have to be brief and not everybody's going to have information every month for us. We're not putting up signs at Winston Road every month. So we're, you know, I think there's, I think there's some positivity here if we could maybe look at a friendly amendment, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Sir.
Counselor Bothwell.
Just to respond to that, I'm not sure what friendly amendment Counselor Dunstall is requesting.
Counselor Dunstall, what were you requesting?
Well, if we could, the last paragraph in the motion recommends monthly reports. If we could change that to read something to the effect that we bring forward community information in a timely fashion, as and when needed. Because rec services isn't always going to have something that would be applicable at a particular month. But maybe public works is going to be closing down a road for six weeks and that would be nice to know ahead of time. So we're we're prepared. That that's like, that's how I I'd like to see it. I I don't, I can't vote on it the way it is because it's saying we're now requiring that each department give us a monthly report. Okay?
So through you, Mayor. I, the intent was not that every director report monthly if there's nothing to report. So if there's nothing to report, they would have a nil. So the intent is if there's anything that is of significant community interest that they would include it, it's not to mandate that they do every month and just say expect them to make something up. So it's it's again where there are matters of community interest that are significant enough that they feel they need to be brought forward. So I don't know how, like, I'd like to leave it this way in the sense that if it's a nil, it's a nil. I'm not, you know, they're not expected to then say anything. But if it's like in this case, we we might have two updates. We might have the interim control by law and we might have the the sign thing. So there's, there's just, you know, two incidences that'll come up. So that provides for nil as well. It's it's open ended, the way the way it's intended here.
I I don't see it like that. If you're saying that you're adding more to it just by what you've said. And if it could say something to that effect, I would be more in favor of it. But the way it stands right now.
Some interest.
But then it's who requires it and it's like, you know.
I do see that part.
Somebody has to determine what that it's required or not. So I think it's where relevant or where deemed important or to the community interest. So I would say to provide monthly updates where deemed important matters of community interest.
C A O, did you have a comment? C A O, thank you. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I think I, that would be good if it was just of relevant community interest. And if you could take out just directors of departments, we're trying to just develop a team based here. And we'll provide that in information reports and put that under consent and you guys can always pull it if you need to, but.
So how about that the C A O and and directors or just where the C A O and directors as needed provide monthly information updates of on where, what I just said, where matters of where relevant on matters of important community interest.
And again, if you could say when when required versus just monthly, there might be some in the month we don't.
I took, take monthly out. I'm just going to say to to provide information, okay, to provide. Well, we want them like
Timely.
Timely, okay, to provide timely information updates. Okay. Try that if if the clerk could look at rewording that with all the little pieces that have been bounced back and forth.
So I have that the C A O provide timely information updates on relevant community matters of interest.
Okay. Okay, so we're putting it on the C A O to come and make sure these things are addressed at committee of the whole monthly, basically then. Is that right?
Yeah, yes.
It was said timely, it wasn't always monthly. And you, to feel better, you could say C A O and or directors.
Yeah, I would like that. That's fine. If that's how we can do it, I think you understand C A O slang, what the intent is here is that we try to be proactive in bringing this information to council and the community. It's not just for us as counselors, because we, yeah, we can do email exchanges. It's so the community is aware. This is, that's the intent of this whole motion. So that would be great, Sarah, and I appreciate your your comments, C A O slang.
Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. To the C A O, are we not already doing this? Are we, we are already bringing timely updates on matters that are relevant, right? It's so we only bring things that are relevant. Is that, is that something that's already happening right now?
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Sharp, it is. But based on the conversation, there are probably some things we could do a little bit better. So, you know, I can accept that friendly amendment to the motion that we do more timely, things like the sign, things like, you know, so you're just made aware of some of those small operational matters that you would be concerned about. So I have no problem friendly amendment to strengthen that, Counselor.
Sure. Will this take our meetings into the wee hours of the mornings?
Through you, Counselor. I think by doing it in consent and then at least it's public. And if someone wants to pull it, you know, a portion of it or something like that, I think, I think we can go through that pretty quickly. It also prevents council platform to send it out to residents that, hey, did you hear this is what's coming forward?
Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, like I said, I have a problem with the way it's written. When you look at all the whereas, and it says that before we receive monthly updates, the intent is all in the whereas in this motion. And that's where, unless we're looking to take a paragraph four, five, three, four, five as well with the amended motion that the intent's there and that's the the issues that I have. Again, we have multiple tools here already there as like our strategic priority updates, minutes from advisory boards and committee meetings. So if you're looking through those meet, those minutes there, we'll know what's going on. You have some information reports already. I mean, the sign's coming. What are we looking at? The sign that we're talking about. I understand that the public might be want to be there, but then we're just going to start talking about the size, the material that it's made out of, what it's supposed to say on the sign, what's the best color scheme to use? I feel that staff does a great job with it as it is. And again, so with this here being the situation and now we have the new tool. So I think this is a little premature to even bring forward with the bang the table. We have all these tools to help communicate with with our public. And this here is just something now that we haven't even met bang the table. Or let's talk Grimsby, giving it an opportunity to communicate to to the community and see how it works. So I think this is still premature and I think it leads us down to a very dangerous path of over monitoring. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt for a moment, please?
Counselor, you have.
I've just heard from a resident that
Vardy.
Mr. Mayor.
We have to have order right now because Counselor Vardy have spoken twice.
It's about something else. Mr. Mayor. I, a resident has contacted me.
Point of order, it's not.
Said that there's no sound on the video.
Okay.
So residents can't hear what we're saying.
All right.
I'm not talking about this motion. There's a technical difficulty.
Thanks, thanks. We're just worried about decorum. Yeah, well, why don't we take a five minute break right now till we due to technical difficulties? Until we get I T to figure out our problem. So while when we
arguing like that.
All right.